Jordan. At seven oh one.
Very good.
Everyone.
Paul Vargas sends his regrets.
Yes, Paul can make it.
Yeah.
All the selectmen are present. Here from the public. Any public to be heard from going once. Going twice. All right, gonna move on to selectmen's briefing. I will try to be brief. Train has completed the installation of our new monitoring system.
Excellent.
Here at the town hall, town office building. I am hooked up remotely as well as Joe. I get morning updates. And. My computer is all hooked up in the office as well as Christine's for monitoring purposes.
So do you, so Bill, do you have it hooked up so that you receive messages on your phone?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yep. So that is completed and. I'm still playing with it to familiarize myself with it, but it looks like a much improved situation.
Is there anything in it that helps to manage humidity in the town office building?
Not where I can really do that, but again, I'm still learning the system. I don't think it has that capability, but there are expandable. Operations that we could take advantage of and I'll, I'll continue to fill you guys in on, on that as it matures. But all the basic fundamental work is completed and it is operational.
That's good. There was an issue with the vault having too much humidity and that was one of the things we were looking at trying to. Ensure was dealt with and monitored. So that's something if you haven't already heard about it or whatever, you could probably talk with Sherry much. She is very familiar with that one. We had, had the companies come in, we had them look at that.
I have, I have heard about it.
Okay, good.
As well as several other concerns that we have in the building, but. That unit is operational. Um, I have sent notice to Otis, head town council review it before. Giving them notice that we were not going to be renewing their contract. Or exercising our. Our renewal option. And that was due, I believe. The first of May. They have acknowledged it. We put in the notice by certified letter. They did call me today appealing. And I said that we had not signed a contract with our new vendor yet, but we were shopping that and getting prices and. Gave him. A taste of what we had been experiencing for many months with that elevator at Norton Hall. Which primarily led to our dissatisfaction with, with the service, so.
We had two contracts with Otis, is this both of them?
No, this is just the, the, the one here, town office building still has some time to go on. We did not have an option to exercise in that. This only pertains to Norton Hall.
Thank you.
Of course, our budget referendum is tomorrow, six AM to eight PM. I. Hardly encourage everybody to participate and vote. Hopefully we'll have a good turnout. As I mentioned to you at our last meeting, the school bus at that time was expected to come in. It has come in and is close to being finalized to get on the road. That's the school bus in this fiscal year's operation. Memorial Day commemoration services are going to be very similar to what was done last year. And. With maybe an addition in that the Babcock Band is asked to play some numbers and we're going to set up. After the services at the Veterans Memorial, we'll be setting up the gazebo with chairs and that and hopefully people go down there and. Enjoy some music by the band and I believe the choral leaders are also going to go down there after they finish at the memorial day. That's going to start on Monday, May 30th at 11 o'clock and we'll be getting a, a program out to everybody. One of the things that I intend on, I'm already looking into it. And anybody that wants to have input to that, please let me know. I'm hoping to put together a Fourth of July weekend celebration of some sort. Hopefully a parade. We did talk to E O Smith today. And it seems they don't think they'll be able to get enough numbers together to participate. Which I think we anticipated, but I'm going to still appeal to them a little more. But anyway, we're looking forward to that. So stay tuned and I'll, I'll keep everybody informed on that. Our ASME contract was ratified by town employees. We are waiting for the final document to come in from the union, but it was ratified. I had a meeting today with our tax collector and I congratulate her. Our real estate collections are. Three quarters over a point of what we had in our budget for anticipating for collections and growing. At the moment, I'm told that that equates. And again, this figure is counting, but equates to about $160,000. Above what we had put into projected revenue.
Good.
So that's good news. And again, congratulations and much appreciation to Linda and the job she does down there. Think that's all on my, my updates. So I'm going to go to item five, which is acceptance. Of the minutes of our regular meeting of April 18th. And then on to our special meeting of April 26th. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I'll move acceptance to those minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. April, special meeting of April 26th. Do I have a motion?
I sent out corrections to that, so I'll make the motion on that they be approved with the corrections that I sent.
I saw those. I believe Chris also didn't have been incorporated. Any other comment? Roger, I'll sit. All in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. And finally, the special meeting of the 29th. I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
There's a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you folks. Item six, hear from boards, commissions, committees and departments. Anyone to be heard? I notice you there, Art.
Yeah, I was here to, we sent in the stuff for the Cattle Rock lease information. I didn't know, it wasn't on the agenda. I sent in, emailed a bunch of stuff early this morning. I don't know if anybody had a chance to see it.
I, I don't think I got it, Art. Huh. Roger, did you or Catherine or?
Uh, I don't think I got it either, but let me check.
Yeah, I, I caught up on all my emails from the weekend and that and I didn't see it, Art.
Well, then I will have to, we did a bunch of work and I had a whole ton of information for you. I'll resend it and maybe we'll get on the agenda for next meeting.
Absolutely.
Yep. All right. Very good.
Thank you, Art.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else to be heard from? I don't see anybody here. Okay. We'll move on to item seven, old business, discuss reopening strategies. I have. I. I have no updates. We're pretty much status quo here. I have been sharing the reports that we're getting out from Eastern Highland. With all of our staff and everything and I also have been trying to include. Everybody on the board on that. It's something we're monitoring. I noticed. And I've been getting daily reports from the school. They're getting upticks in their numbers also. But again, the hospital numbers and. Well, thank, thank the Lord, the, the death numbers are not increasing with any proportion, so we'll continue to monitor that.
Yeah, we've had six deaths so far.
Last I saw, I believe it was five.
Oh, okay. Bill, just about the last item, we did receive something this morning. It just, it came from. I think an email you might not have recognized. But it was definitely from Art. Let's say you have, that you may want to double check.
Could you, could you forward me whatever you're looking at, Roger?
Sure.
Make sure, because Chris, did you see anything?
Yeah, I got it. I got it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, item B under old business, Astrid Advisory School Committee. Chris had an opportunity. To speak with Jim Rupert, who said he, it's this time he still has no report. COVID update, I think we kind of just covered that. Street lighting, our famous two street lights, we are continuing to work on that. American Rescue Plan, we continue to work on that. I'm, I'm, if we're not ready to go hybrid, I'm, I'm interested in the board's feeling about. At least doing a public hearing through Zoom.
I think we need to do something, but this, you know, kind of, I hate to use the word sitting on the money, but. You know, there are some things that could be taken care of. That were, you know, requested by the public. We should be able to do that, at least some of them, for one, the pickleball court.
Yeah, at least the highlighted items that we know are priorities. I like to. Because the, the way contracting and everything is going right now. I'm, I'm, I'm hoping we don't miss this summer. It's certainly a goal that we've had to get that done, plus to work in front of the. Norton Hall and a couple of other things. So. Let me put something together for the board for our next meeting. Or even send something out to you folks before then, maybe we'll try to do a public key meeting. Public hearing anyway on those portions that we're prioritizing, general discussion.
If we were doing it in June, let's just say we were having the public hearing in June, that could get into the citizen. We could probably, I would hope, maybe put in a, a little bit of a summary about what has been asked for by the public. And what else, you know, has come up through our, you know, capital improvement committee, that kind of thing. At least something for people to look at before they go into the public hearing.
I'm all for making that a goal and try to get, we'll try to get that together.
Yeah.
Okay. Item F, Tremco House Review Committee. I've left several messages for Bob Heard and I emailed him today. And I'm a bit worried because as I had mentioned to you folks, he had been getting back to me and let me know how he's doing, although. It was coming along slow, but I have not heard from him now in three weeks. And that's another issue I think that we're going to have to bring to ahead and.
Yeah.
Get a plan on where we're going to go in case he just cannot do it.
I, I have a feeling that he won't be able to, and I think that even before he was, you know. We weren't hearing back from him, so. This is what happened before and I'm not hopeful.
Yeah. All right, item G is discuss and or act on health insurance incentives. We did get some new figures in, although I have not confirmed them or anything. And I understand the school has not taken any action yet, so my suggestion is we just continue to carry that on the agenda. For future action on it or future consideration of our former action on that.
At what point? At what point in the year do we typically? Provide that incentive to people who have elected to take it?
My understanding is it's the end of the year. It's in December.
End of the, end of the fiscal year?
End, end of the calendar year. If I don't, I may be wrong on that, but I believe it's the end of the calendar.
It gets, it gets paid. It gets paid in December.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, item H, Route 89 encroachment permit. We should raise a new flag. We got, we got all the paperwork in and we got it acknowledged. I believe, was it today or Friday, Chris?
I sent it in Friday and they acknowledged it today.
So, and we've notified the school that that's on its. It's actually in DOT's hands right now and we're anticipating, we're hoping for a quick turnaround on that.
And on that encroachment, that encroachment thing, that is for us to put up signage? For the.
The new sign.
Yeah. The automated sign in front of the school or near the school?
That's correct. Two of them.
Okay, and. You know, that won't be a permanent solution, but that will be able, allow us to monitor. What's going on there? Was that correct?
That's what we're hoping for.
Okay, and then ultimately I'm hoping that we can get to something permanent. That's at least up during school or active during school hours and in the normal school year.
I forget the name of the school, but I, I, several times I've gone by in Willington on Route 32. They've got a similar system set up and it's quite impressive. I'd encourage you and Roger, if you, if you're in that area, take a right, take a look at it.
Yeah, I have seen it.
Our intention is to try to facilitate a meeting with the people from DOT. I know they want to talk about 74 and 44. And I want to talk to them about appealing again for them to reduce the speed limit here in the center of town.
Yeah.
And I think appealing to them to take a new look at the limits up near the school and that would be helpful too.
Right. I was working with Mike Gantic on this and he does know individuals at the DOT that would be. Good contacts for you.
Yeah, I've, I've had a couple of discussions with Mike about that. He is very helpful and knowledgeable.
Yes, he is.
Item I is discuss speeding issues on town roads. Joe tells me he's got, I believe he said about 20 signs. And we're starting to disperse them. I know Norton Hill Road, Wormer Hill Road, I've asked him to take a look at a couple of other roads. That we've been speaking issues on.
When, when you say signs, what kind of signs are you talking about?
Speed limit signs.
Oh, they're just the hardest, speed limit signs.
What we're told by Connecticut State Police is unless, they have no enforcement abilities unless we have signage.
Of course.
My instructions to Joe is let's get signage up. On any, on, you know, we'll, we'll start slow, but intention, we should have signage on all our roads as far as I'm concerned. So the, unfortunately, like everything else, the cost of these signs are going up drastically, but. We're working on that and Joe is pushing forward with that.
Good.
I did have a meeting with Jim Revitzky and went over his letter. And I think it was a productive meeting. And he made a good point. About the trees that have to come down or should come down that are, some of them or many of them are on private property. That if they come down could damage a lot of our gravestones and the cemeteries and everything. So I'm putting together a walkthrough with Jim and with Joe to take a look at that. I briefly mentioned to Duncan that I'd like to come up with a form. That we can present to the private owners, a waiver to give us permission to make arrangements to take those trees down. Just so we have liability coverage and don't go on someone's property without them acknowledging permission for that, so.
And the, and the intent is for public works to take those trees down?
Well, I, I want Joe to get back to us with a report on that. Because I think that some of them, and I haven't looked at them with Jim yet, but some of them are probably beyond our capabilities. But I'm going to let Joe determine that. And we did talk about the Reverend Hale's tombstone and we'll have more to report on that. We did have Chris check the funds in our cemetery fund. That could help if we had to go to a private vendor for taking down any of the trees. Or any other costs. We do have $95,000 in that cemetery fund right now. That I think we could utilize. And also I know Roger, I believe maybe you want to address, you, you met with Jim briefly.
Yeah, I mean, we just kind of, like I said, he was working across the street from my house on Saturday, so I just. You know, just kind of talked with him and, and you know, we talked about. You know, the trees and he understands the liability involved and what have you. Another thing he expressed a concern was in terms of, you know. You know, we got to need to probably start looking at. You know, with the cemetery, we, I don't know what, you know, he doesn't know what's going to happen with cemeteries in the future. But you know, maybe we need to be a little bit proactive in acquiring land for future expansion. You know, as required, you know. I don't know how much, where we are in terms of capacity and, but we certainly need to consider that.
Well, I, you know, along those lines, I think we briefly mentioned in our last meeting. I understand that he's got a opponent who wants to buy 30 plots who's not from town.
Well, yeah.
And I, I think we have to seriously take a look at that and perhaps. Do an evaluation if we're going to give preference to local residents or if we can legally or whatever. Or what the implications are of a large buyer coming in.
Some philanthropist.
Yeah, and, and, and buying a large plot and jeopardizing the numbers we have for our own residents and then selling them. I, I think that's going to be a discussion and I'm going to initiate for our town council to get his input, but.
I think, I think that would be a very good idea. You said a philanthropist wanted to buy 30 plots?
I don't use those bigger words, but Roger did.
Hold on, I got to break down my, my thesaurus.
Sounds like a money-making proposition to me.
It could be, it could be. My, my, now I have, the people that Jim had mentioned to me, although he hadn't, I heard from someone else. That it was 30. I had the impression just talking with Jim, it was. You know, a typical family that was going in for, I don't know, six or eight, but I found out it was 30. The, 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 oh Jim, I understand, and this is secondhand news. That it's all for the same family, but you know, 30 is a, is an awful large group and, and why they wouldn't. Make an effort in their own town to find that out, but.
Yeah, that's, I, I would be curious as to the name of that group and see if they do this in other towns as well.
Yeah, so anyway, I think it, it's going to take something that we're going to have to look into a little more. Item K is review of estimated costs associated with CES. With the existing conditions. I don't know if you folks had a chance to look at it. I did briefly, but I haven't been able to do a lot of math on it. The math I did, I lost some more here and I don't have a lot more to lose.
Now, I'd like us to, you know, take another really good look at it.
Yeah, yeah.
And that would be something, that would be something too, that we need to take a really good look at it because that, some of that could come up. Should come up when we have the public hearing about the use of ARPA funds.
Yeah, and, and I think we intend and I'm, I've got Chris working on because we got some ARPA updates. And along with our own town ordinances, we did get a price in from Nutmeg, an updated price for the work at Norton Hall. With the split units.
Oh yeah, good.
And I've asked Chris to call. A couple of other vendors so that we can get our competitive bid because. That priority list that we were talking about earlier, I think that's, that's on that list.
No, potentially include the part, this is a part of having a problem with one of their splits.
There's, there's a potential there that we could take care of that too.
Okay.
I think that is a very good idea. The. Particularly at Norton, what was interesting when, and I'm sorry, his name escapes me right now, but when the gentleman from CES was speaking. He said something about Norton wasn't used all that much and that's not true. Norton is.
Yeah, I.
More and more it has been used.
I mentioned that perhaps that was true during COVID, but, but we're getting more and more use of that and I can see. For our future use, that's going to be on the increase, not on the decrease.
Right, I think that, I think it actually changed about a year ago.
Yeah, yeah. I believe, is his name Steve Vernon? Is that right, Chris?
We're specing.
From, from CES?
Oh, from Steve Brian Hamel.
Well, it wasn't even close. Never mind. Too many faces, too many names, so we'll continue to research that. Going into new business, Otis Elevator Contract, I believe I've already reported here on that. In my briefing.
Yeah.
Item B, review request from Sustainable Connecticut for designation of a municipal employee. I had a meeting. With Melissa about that. And she feels, and I, my agreement is that she should be the designated. She does that work now. Her concern is. And she does a fine job at that incidentally. But her concern is putting one more person into that. Because normally when that comes to hand, it's, it's dealing on an emergency basis of some sort. And Melissa's concerned and she certainly speak for herself. And I'd be glad to invite her to a meeting if we had to, was that to add more, one more link into the context there with. More complicated, potentially complicate things than, than to. Change.
So, all right, so she works two days for the town and three days for the school.
However, while you say the school, it's, it's for the students up there, but I have never had any issue. On contacting her on the days that she has off hours at the school. With, with her performing her duties on any, I don't know. What's your experience on that has been Catherine, but I've never had a problem with being able to connect whether she's sitting at her desk here. Or down there and we pay her for the full five days. It's not a shared cost. It's, it's one of these things that I mentioned to the board of bed.
So.
That we pay for and let them utilize, because it just.
Right, so, so here's the situation. We had families that were displaced. On North, I think, I'm trying to remember if it was North Road, but displaced four families. And she worked with them, first of all, she worked with them Christmas Eve, Christmas, all through Christmas. And then for months afterwards, okay, and she, it was clear that she was having to put in extra time in order to support them. And so it wasn't, it didn't naturally fit into everything when she had that situation. So that's, that's the concern I have. I think that there should be some kind of a partnership. Where she is not the only person. Doing this. Because she has, she has regular responsibilities as well. So I don't know how much general downtime she has, but certainly, you know, I didn't see a lot of downtime.
Yeah, well luckily enough, and you know, we can always have an emergency. I, I believe that four families was a, a rather unique situation. Thank the Lord. But I have never got any complaints to her that she's overburdened or whatever, but we can certainly look at that.
She did not complain.
She, she's never complained and as I said, I think I've had three instances. Of people that needed some sort of assistance, if nothing more than consultation, but. Where she's interceded and taken immediate action. And a couple of those days were on days that she was at the school, so. I, I just don't, I, I wouldn't favor at this point making any changes. We can certainly keep it in mind. And you know, I, I did have a discussion with, with Kit over at the senior center and she's certainly willing to help. And she certainly doesn't want to hinder anything, so like, you know, we can keep our options open, but I, I'm. I'm in favor of keeping things status quo, at least for now.
Well, I'll, I'll just say, I just, I disagree on that, but that's the decision that's being made, so.
Just backtracking a little bit, back to the. Have we reached out to other companies for the elevator contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and we've got one bid that we're expecting any day now that's going to come in.
Okay.
In writing, we've got a verbal on it.
Yep.
And it's somebody that has serviced that elevator years past.
Okay, good. I, I just want to make sure that we're able.
No, we're not going to, and, and. the, the, the operating manager for Otis called me and was making appeal.
Okay.
And said, well, how about if we offer you a one-year deal, and we'll take special attention for it, and I said, at this point, I'm not gonna make any commitment. I said, you're certainly welcome to send me an email, uh, if, if you want to, you know, change our agreement, but we're not renewing it right now, and we're shopping, so.
Well, you said you filled in the person, um, from Otis on what we had been experiencing, it's actually been over a, a few years, um, but it sounds, so it sounds like that person didn't know?
Well, he told me he just came on in that position, I believe he said in January. And I said, look, I, I took the first select, selectance position in November, and we were without an elevator here for a good three and a half months. And I, I, I did go into everything. And he said he wanted to help and improve things, but I, I more or less didn't want to give him hope that I don't think is there. But at the same time, I, I said, if you want to send something in, we'll send something in. But I said, well, our intention at this point is we're making a change, and we don't want to continue, so.
That sounds right. By the way, when we did have the elevator, um, I'm trying to think, when CES came out and was doing their assessment of the town office building, uh, they indicated that they could smell the, uh, whatever the fluid is that's in the elevator, when they went into the small conference room downstairs, first of all, they smelled it on the main level, uh, where I don't think we recognized it, but certainly in that small conference room downstairs, they actually asked to go in there and check it out. Uh, and, uh, you know, we had to, you know, find the key so they can unlock the door to get in there, but the, uh, they indicated that there were, uh, fumes coming from the elevator that's in the town office building.
I, I'm sorry, Catherine, small conference room on the first floor?
Uh, on the, you know, the bottom floor of the town office building.
The basement?
Yeah, okay, the basement.
The basement, okay, all right. Uh, I'll be honest with you, I haven't been down there, um, I think I opened the door a few times for service people.
And that's just it, um, but they said that they smelled them on the, the main level, and then went down, uh, and found that it was even stronger on the other level, and they said it was coming from the hydraulics, I believe it is, in the elevator.
Okay.
So that's something you should probably have checked out, uh, and actually, we should ask CES what they came up with on that. I don't remember seeing anything.
I'll take a look at it tomorrow, and certainly, put that on the agenda to take a look at. All right, um, I'm gonna move on to, under new business, item C, boards, commission, committee appointments, recreation commission, I believe we already did those two, didn't we, uh, Chris, or these, we did two last week.
You did, I'm sorry.
No problem.
I missed that, you still have the alternate.
Yeah, and, um, we do have a, a, a good prospect, uh, to take that alternate position, who's going to go to their next meeting, which I believe is this week, and they're going to have an recommendation, and he's going to, uh, submit a letter of interest. Uh, so I think we'll fill that.
We need someone to chair that commission.
This, I don't want to mention his name, because we haven't done anything, but he's a former chairman, and he is certainly willing to consider that.
Well, if he's an alternate, he can't chair, but.
I'm not sure that, I'm, I'm looking, because Chris mentioned that, Catherine, I'm not sure of that, but we'll look into that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
I mean, if the chairman of the Board of Finance by statute doesn't have to even be a member of the board, I'd be surprised if an alternate on, on, on the rec committee couldn't serve as chairman.
Right, I didn't see that, I'll have to look that up, up, up at the Board of Finance.
Yeah, I always, I always found that very interesting, because way, way back, before your time, Catherine, there were some concerns about a chairman, and I, my recollection, and it's over twenty years ago, right? No one was showing an interest to stand up, and we had checked statutes, and it did not even have to be a member, they wouldn't have a vote. They would be a facilitator only, they wouldn't have a vote acting in that capacity, but they could be named chairman. I found it very interesting, check the statute, you find otherwise, if they.
I will, I, yeah, I'll look at the statute, because the other members have to vote that person, uh, to be chair, and I was, my understanding, they had to vote for a member, okay?
Um, Commission on Aging, I still have somebody interested, although, you know, if you, for this person is still recuperating, I had a discussion with her yesterday. She's relinquishing a couple of other responsibilities, and she's in, still in rehab, uh, from some surgery that she had, and she hurt her shoulder in rehab, believe it or not. So she's, she says, I'm getting rehab for my rehab, but, um, uh, it's still open, and I don't have anybody else. Hopefully in the near future, but if you folks come up with either an R or an Ophelia.
Is that, has that per, has that board been meeting, that commission at all?
Regularly, from what I'm told.
Well, they do not put out any minutes or agendas?
Um, I will look into that, not.
I actually, I actually spoke to them about, uh, that, uh, that came up when I was there, and there are, there are none out there for two thousand twenty, there's only one out there for a canceled meeting in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, I'm talking about the town website, and there are none for two thousand twenty-two.
Well, that's, I was not aware of that, thanks for calling it my attention, we'll certainly look into that, because there should be.
Absolutely.
They fall within the FOI requirements, so I'm not sure how that ever happened, but certainly look into that, Catherine, thank you. Uh, tax refunds?
I have two, both citing statute twelve dash one twenty-nine, Edna Harrington, an amount of sixty-one dollars and eighty-three cents, and James and Robin Martin for two forty-five thirty-five.
I'm, I move to accept those.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion, hearing and all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Catherine, I see you made a request at our last meeting, and I see it's not on here. So we'll ask our executive assistant to put it on items for next agenda.
Yeah. Only, only that way we have an opportunity to at least talk before, you know, an agenda gets put together.
No, I, I think it's a good idea, I have no problem.
And it's good for planning.
Yeah, absolutely. Any comments for the good of the board? Get out and vote, everybody.
Thank you, motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.